Looking, well, for the new machine, it's like super quiet, much more efficient. And then it like auto adjusts the air pressure versus pre-setting it.
Addressed to impress, right?
Hey. Until I can get like another shoe on, I'm gonna be, or feel comfortable, maybe even running, I don't know. I'm just happy I can get two shoes on. Not wear flip flops in here, it counts.
I really look forward to do basketball, because that's much less obtrusive than the old, smaller, and there's no.
Okay, well, call them in, you know, order them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today praying to seek peace and prosperity for the city that we love. We pray in hopes that you give wisdom to the governing body and city staff to make wise decisions for the city and the community that we care for. Please, God, use us as tools to best serve you. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Item C, approval of the agenda.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item D, citizens' comments.
Okay, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak for three minutes?
I would.
Okay.
My name is Johnny Kimpel. I have that house over there, right over there, and I've been working on that. I came in November when I got a letter from Micah. And I came back, cleaned out the yard, spent $2,000 on that. I have the house sold to some buyers that live in town. I could not get those people out. Here's all the notices I sent them for trying to get them evicted. Three-day notice, two 30-day notices. Then, I had the dumpster last week show up to clean out the house. Finally, the people got out. The house is structurally okay. I've done everything you guys have asked me to do. I live in Washington. I have to fly back here. I have to deal with this. These people, Jason Griswold and his family, live in the apartments. They want to buy my house. We have an agreement. All I'm asking for, because of COVID, the time, I couldn't do it all in the timeframe that I had. I had to come back again for this meeting.
Mr. Kimpel, I'm sorry. We'll have an actual public hearing portion where all of your comments will be on the record. That's.
Do you want to speak during that time?
So you guys don't want me to talk now, or what? You just asked if I wanted to talk for three minutes?
You've got an, you've actually got an item agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You can have more extended time.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, anybody else saying none, we'll move on.
Item F, approval of the consent agenda.
Does anyone have any questions on the table?
Also to note, the fireworks sales applications are in the consent agenda.
I was being asked with this $24,837 for open government wish for, says renewal, but what does it do?
That's our transparency and document search portal for the finances, so if folks wanted to go into greater detail, that's the portal that they would access that through.
Is that a yearly thing then?
Yes, sir.
It also includes, Mike can speak more specifically to it, it's something that he uses for.
Yeah, it's our, part of the portion of the Open Gov is our online permit portal for software. And basically, what this allows people to do is to submit their permits online and pay for them online, which expedites that process quite significantly without anybody, instead of having to come to City Hall, for example, which was very apropos considering the pandemic, a lot of people were able just to pay and process all their permits online. And that basically is a portion of what the Open Gov software covers, as well as the transparency part for the same transparency.
Does anyone have any questions? Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Item G1, unfit habitation in 1529 Summerwood update.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, first, we're going to go ahead and look at the unfit habitation for 1529 Summerwood. This is a receiving file. Number two would be the public hearing, which will officially open, and that's for 101 North Cedar for, so for G1, 1529 Summerwood, this is just like I said, a receiving file and an update. On March 13th, 2020, quick background, the city has conducted preliminary investigation into a property located in 1500 block of the Seasons subdivision, and have determined based on the investigation of the property was unfit for human habitation. On October 19th, the governing body signed a resolution for condemnation hearing for December 7th. On December 7th, the governing body decided to extend the grace period for the owner till February 1st to review of work accomplished inside the property. And on February 1st, 2021, the governing body allowed Pathway Church to act as a remediation team for the property, and a follow-up report was scheduled for March 1st. Pathway Church is removing trash and helping to remediate. They have confirmed that all rooms have been cleaned, with the exception of the master bedroom, which is in the process of being packed. Property owner has moved out and is renting an apartment, and will no longer be using the house for storage as all other non-essential material be placed in a storage unit. Property owner has conveyed she is desiring to sell the house. This was confirmed at the last city council meeting. At this point, the matter is concluded by the city unless another investigation happens due to unforeseen circumstances. So this is just the general update on that one. This is the garage, which is the leftover that needs to be moved out, and this was from two weeks ago, so they actually have already moved out, as you can see the snow on the ground right there. But they've already packed it all up, moved her out, and I confirmed of Melanie Brown last city council meeting that there was, in fact, she was planning on selling the property, so. So at that point, just receiving files.
Is your turn to the house good for habitation now?
The inside of the house, I think, still needs to go through some remediation, but for the most part, she moved everything out. She's selling it as is. The bank doesn't want to step in during pandemic right now, so since Pathway helped her clean everything else out, it would just be a sold-as-is situation. Most of it was trash and accumulation of material, and so, and Pathway confirmed that they did do some cleaning and some remediation inside. Besides just moving the stuff out, they did help her clean everything else up as well. But, I mean, in terms of unfit habitation, I would expect at this point, it would just be a sell-as-is, since most of it, like I said, was accumulation of trash, which they moved everything out of it. Is there any other questions or comments on this one for 1529?
Do we need you in?
No, just receiving files. This is just an update. At this point, we're going to just consider the matter closed unless something should come up where, you know, we would need to investigate again, because if the neighbors say anything about it, we have to go take another look at it to see what's happening. But as of this point, as soon as she sells the house, it's going to be up to the bank to kind of make the determination there. Next one, this is G2, public hearing for condemnation 101 North Cedar Street. This is a public hearing. It's quasi-judicial in nature. You guys will be acting as a deliberation for determining what to do with this particular property. The mayor will open the meeting. There will be findings of fact done by myself, at which point, all stakeholders, including the property owner, is able to speak for an extended period of time to exceed the normal three minutes from citizens' comments. But at this point, they would be an open public hearing, after which, mayor will close the public hearing, and there will be no more questions and comments other than what the governing body wants to ask of people. But there will be no more comments from the public or anyplace else. At which point, you'd make a deliberation, and there'll be a formal action taken by the governing body and recommendations by staff. So, at this point, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
So I guess we open the public hearing?
Yes, sir. So, quick background, November 11th, 2020, co-enforcement officer being myself, did a preliminary investigation into the property located at 101 North Cedar Street. It was found to be in violation of City of God or Code under Chapter 4, Article 7 for unfit habitation. Certified letter was sent to the property owner allowing 30 days to lapse to begin the process of bringing the property up to the standard for livability. Property owner did some mitigating work to the yard, but failed to bring any overall improvements to property itself. It is now recommended that the governing body move forward, assigning the resolution to set a date for a public hearing to consider condemnation. The governing body did adopt the resolution on 2104 on January 11th, 2021, to schedule a public hearing for March 15th, 2021, to hear findings of fact, which is today. City of God or Code, officer found the following non-compliance with the City of God or Code, Chapter 4, Article 7, for listed property below. The following constitutes a blinding influence under the Kansas statute annotated 12-1750D, uncleanliness, dilapidation, misrepair, structural defects, walls, sightings, or exteriors of quality appearance not commensurate with the character of the properties in the neighborhood, unsightly stored or parked material, equipment, supplies, machinery, trucks or automobiles or parts thereof, or any violation of health fire building or zoning regulations. These are some of the pictures taken. They are included in the agenda packet. There is a small cost associated with publication as is required by state law. Certified letters were sent out to everyone who is considered a stakeholder and is approved as to form. So once again, there was an open public meeting, open public hearing, which was just opened, received findings of facts by myself, and now there will be stakeholder comments. So at this point, Mr. Kimpel, if you'd like to speak.
I would.
After which, the Griswalds are welcome to speak.
I do.
And then, after that, we'll close the public hearing, and then consider adoption or tabling or whatever the governing body would like to do.
Here's pictures of when I left, when I got this house ready to. I had at least an own deal with these people. He went to jail, she went to jail. The property's thrashed. I cleaned it out, I cleaned the yard, I cleaned out, I had a dumpster last week. We've got it cleaned. I have the doors, new doors, new windows ordered because of what's going on with COVID. It's not coming through yet. The people just did me really wrong. I've lived here since 95. I raised my family here. I love Goddard. I don't know why it took a year for them to get a hold of me and tell me what was going on, but then all of a sudden, I've done everything. I live in Washington State. I fly here. I've done everything that you've asked. All I ask is that, Jason, my buyer can take over and fix the place. I have the doors, I have the windows. They're going to be here this week. It's not like I don't want to fix it. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm 1,600 miles away from home. I want this to go to Jason. He was my apprentice. They live here in town. They want their kids to live here in town. I want that property back the way it was when I lived there. All my neighbors liked me. I had no problems. So I have no problem fixing it up. All I'm asking is you give us time. Because of COVID going on, this is twice I've had to put out a lot of money. So, that's where I'm at. Now, Jason, get back to y'all. Here's to that.
Yeah, I'm Jason Griswold. Like Johnny said, I'm interested in buying the property. All I'm asking from you guys is to give us a little bit of time to try to address the situation. The people that were there actually did go to jail. We found out through the city, with the police and everything, that we couldn't do nothing while they were in jail. So, you know, we kind of took our time with what we could do, and now that they are gone and the weather's starting to pick up, we're just asking that you guys give us a little bit of time to do the renovations to the property and, you know, just help us out, because we've been complying with you guys. We're here today to try to talk with you guys, but I'm just asking, you know, kind of reciprocate it back to us, and hopefully we can work something out with each other. Even if there is a timeframe, we still want to kind of address the situation, because like I said, my son does go to school out here, over here at Oak Street. He's been here since kindergarten. And like I said, we'd like to stay here. We would like to further, you know, our relations with you guys, and we don't want to be a problem to anybody. We just want to address the situation and fix it, and just kind of get up, you know, get away from the situation at hand. So, if you have any questions for me.
Micah, other than the exterior stuff, the interior looks like they are doing work inside the property.
Okay.
I don't know if you've seen these pictures.
No, I haven't been.
As far as the exterior, I think that's where most of your concerns were coming from, right?
Yeah, and the interior, there was some water damage on the inside when I did interior inspection, and there were some holes in the ceiling, and the siding on the, on the house itself is an extreme disrepair. There's whole gaps between it which can allow for water damage. So there are some, there are some several issues just besides just exterior in terms of needing paint or anything of that nature. It's going to be a substantial amount of work, but I haven't seen those pictures, so I'd have to take my good faith.
And it is something that we are trying to address. Like I said, we even talked about re-signing the whole house here within, hopefully, the next few weeks or so. Like I said, I, you know, my wife's been talking with him a little bit here and there, and like I said, we're just trying to do our due diligence and trying to keep up with you guys and do our part. And we're just, like I said, all we're asking is just a little bit of help to help us out, give us a little bit of time so we can address the situation, because, like I said, the people that were there before us, I don't know if they ran drugs, but if you've seen the house, I have pictures on my phone of how disgusting the house really was. I went in there myself personally and cleaned out the entire house. Took me a little while, but I actually went in there and took control of every situation, cleaned everything possibly out of there. So, like I said, we're still trying to do what we possibly can. COVID is a situation, and we're trying to address it as fast as we can. Plus, like I said, it was during the winter time, and now it's starting to warm up. We have a little bit more time. All I'm asking is you guys to help us.
When do you plan on purchasing it?
When do I plan on it? We already have an agreement that we've already signed off on, and like I said, we want to continue with it. Like I said, I'm very adamant about it. I've got people to assess, assist me, excuse me, with the property renovations as well. So like I said, I'm just asking for a little bit of time just to work with us.
How long do you think it would take you to get back to where, I mean, fixing the siding is where it's, I think the real reason why we go through this process like we did with the last one is because it, you know, comes as a health hazard to the people that are living in there.
Right.
So, how long is it going to take you to where you?
We're shooting by July is what we're shooting for, to have, you know, people over there and get stuff fixed up. Like I said, we're talking about re-signing the house within the next couple of weeks. So, we're trying to address what we can as fast as possible. Mine and my wife, we have a contract with our other place where we're staying at. We're trying to be out by July, so we're trying to have the house livable. Nobody will be inside the house living until the house is up to code, so.
And you would be living in the house?
Yeah, me and my wife and my son, my daughter's at her mother's house right now, but, yeah, we'd be living there. Like I said, nobody's going to live there until the house is actually up to code.
Guess I don't really have a problem with that plan. What do you guys?
I'm producing the exterior work as well.
We're going to do everything. I actually work for the union. I do plumbing as well, too, so I know what it means to have everything in code, whether it be the heating, the, you know, AC, everything like that, your plumbing, your electrical, things like that as well. So, I understand what needs to be addressed. I do this for a living, so I'm just asking just a little bit of time to assess the situation.
Do you have a list of the actual items about the property that you're concerned about that he can directly focus on?
No, not particularly. It was overall, it was pretty extensive.
That you sent me.
Right, and that's not a consensus, that's not a complete list, but comprehensively, we would have to get, everything is talked about from siding and plumbing, HVAC and everything else, would have to have a permit pulled, and that'd have to be inspected by MABCD, so.
Right.
If he's going to be following in line with that, we would have an inspector on site every time he would do one of those improvements to make sure to bypass and run.
Well, I think that helps smooth the process to make sure you know, to make sure you need to get fixed, is I think we need to get him a list of the actual improvements that we are concerned about as a city. And then, and then go from there.
Right, no, I appreciate that. I'd like to go with that, too.
Where are you guys at?
Yeah, I'm encouraged by the work that I see on the interior of the house. I just, you know, we, I've lived in, I grew up here in Goddard, and just actually over there is where I grew up initially, but it's like, you know, we've got a nice park here, and that, that property is such, such a detraction.
And that was our concern about addressing with just the siding for the aesthetic appeasing of the property itself. I understand, and that's why we were over there, like I said, trying to take all bits of trash and everything possible, and that's why we want to dress up the house.
I mean, I'm definitely for, if you're going to take responsibility and get it cleaned up the way it should be, and, you know, fit in well with how much good work's been done around there, then I'm for that. I don't have a problem with that.
Appreciate that.
And I think part of our concern, too, was we weren't sure if purchaser was aware of everything going on, and we didn't want anybody like us to be like, okay, well, it's going to get fixed, and then, you know, somebody slipped through the cracks, or, you know, we wanted to make sure everybody was on the same level page and we knew what was going on, so that it could be fixed and not continue. And I understand if you're not here, you have no idea what your renters are doing.
Exactly.
Which made it hard for you. So, I do appreciate you coming and getting us up to speed and letting us know what's going on. And, yeah, there's a ton of improvement that's been done from what the pictures show, so.
Can you make sure you communicate with Micah?
Yeah, he has my phone number, yeah.
Sell the property and move on, and you take 100%?
Yeah.
Responsibly, okay. Okay. I guess, I mean, I think we should probably table it until, do you want to set a timeline to where we can reconvene and look, look at the improvements back? I guess what's a reasonable timeline? I think before July or sometime then, just, I mean, we're not going to make the decision, just assess everything.
Or maybe even just like a touch base, like let's know.
Right, yeah.
Well, I think if we just hit like every 30 days, you know, give Mike a rundown on what's been done and to show that there's been progress made.
Yeah, so you're able to give me a list, and we can work off that. I have no problem with that, like I said.
What do you want to do, I guess, what's the next?
Close the hearing?
At this point, we would like to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to close the public hearing?
Okay, I guess I.
Just say close public hearing.
I make the decision to close the public meeting, hearing?
And then you would consider adoption of the resolution, or, the resolution basically entails a time. If you want to sign the resolution, you would set a date that work has to start by this time, and it would have to be completed by a certain time. If you wanted to have a good faith period in there where work was being done, and you wanted to extend the resolution, you're welcome to. Right now, that resolution would abide, would apply to the property owner, which is still Mr. Kimpel. So there would have to be a transfer of ownership as noted by the county, because right now, the county has confirmed that Mr. Kimpel is still the property owner. So, if there was a formal transfer of ownership, that would have to be done officially through the county, and a title transfer as well, at which point, the Griswalds would be officially property owners, and they'd be culpable for the property at that point.
You guys don't have any problem with that, do you?
No, we have, we've already worked out a lot of the details. It's just I can't keep coming back here. I can't keep coming back.
What point, what point in time are you going to transfer the title?
Soon as, he, right now, he's trying to get his VA loan, but you have to have the house up to code. So, once the house is up to code.
I've already been approved of the VA home loan of $150,000. I'm just trying to get the house dressed up and then have the house pretty much paid off to him as soon as possible, but that's another guideline or something else, so.
Well, I guess that doesn't really answer the question.
Right. He wants to know if you're going to actually sign the title over, because I'd have to be the one that takes over the work and everything else, so. It's on the.
I don't know, as soon as I can. I don't know. I can't just say, okay, it's yours. We have to make some kind of payment plan, or.
Well, that's what they're trying to say, that if I'm going to do the work on the property, then the title would have to be just necessarily my name, but we still have another mutual agreement for the actual ownership for price-wise, so you could technically still sign what they're asking. You just sign the property over to me, so I take 100%, and whatever I have to owe you is between me and you, and the house would be my problem, essentially, is what they're saying.
Yeah, whenever, as soon as I can. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I would just as soon see it happen as soon as possible, so that I would be rolling your wing with one person.
Exactly. That's, that's exactly what I want, because I have a whole nother life after I retire. I love living here, but it's, it's like, I want someone else that's responsible, that wants to live here. These last people, I should have done a deeper background check on, because he went to jail, she went to jail. Those kids were living over there with nobody there, so.
I just want to know when you're going to be able to sign the property over. How soon do you think you can sign it over?
Anytime, whenever you have the money on your hands.
Be sure to communicate that with Micah.
We will.
And I can check the Cedric County records at any time to make sure of transfer of ownership.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just not sure why Mr. Kimpel wanted to leave paradise. I'm just not sure why Mr. Kimpel wanted to leave paradise.
That's a good question, actually. Those kids screaming every day when they have the splash pad, that kinda did not really do it for me.
Okay, so are we good to move on to the next item?
Would you like to make a motion to table it and then have a second and we can move on from there?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table the resolution.
Okay.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All on table say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and the council, this is consideration of utilizing Sheldon Architecture and McCown Gordon to facilitate our community engagement process to utilize public space.
No, good, take it easy.
We have representatives from Sheldon and McCown Gordon here to walk through kind of the history, as I say, in the staff narrative. McCown Gordon has a field office here in town in the industrial park and has a vested interest in the community, which is part of why they reached out. We've previously utilized Sheldon Architecture for the successful projects of the pavilion and the splash pad and that was an extensive community engagement process for the development of the Park Master Plan as well. And I will now turn it over to Mr. Stan Sheldon, David Beaver, and are you in the background, Matthew?
I'll just, I'll hang out here if I get tipped, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Well, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We, we really don't have a specific thing in mind right now to, to be honest with you. We know that there's a need for, I guess, kinda getting feedback from the, from the whole city, from the town and figure out exactly what the next steps might be for spaces needed for the city to operate in a really good way. We don't know exactly what that means yet. We don't know, you know, what kind of space, you know, how's this building serving you? The library, the community center, other things that might be really helpful for Goddard. We don't really have any preconceived ideas or, you know, a solid notion of what those things might be. But we've had to, you know, take universities and, and other institutions through a process of kind of a master planning process. We've done that with the park system stuff and we've looked at a variety of different locations throughout, you know, Goddard. Signage opportunities, things to kind of really identify key markers along Kellogg to say, hey, you've arrived, working on your new logo, all those sort of things we did, you know, several years ago. We think that, you know, our, our ability to kind of at least understand some of the pieces that we talked about for the park system, that might have some good overlap with other spaces that might, you know, the city might like to see enhanced. Again, things like community centers, libraries, those are the kind of things that have been talked about. But what should be the answer? What kind of space would be really helpful to the city? Both from the, you know, community in terms of spaces that might be helpful for civic things that would happen, whether it's Chamber of Commerce meetings or other things that might occur in the city? If, if people could, you know, rent some space or utilize space here just from different neighborhoods that would like to see those kind of events be able to occur on a city venue, a city property. But again, we, we're not really sure what all those things would be. You know, we, we could come up with a lot of preconceives and, you know, throw stuff out, but we really wanna just have a, a process where we take over the next two, three, four months and engage both, you know, whichever departments Brian and you guys altogether feel are the key stakeholders in making decisions like that. We would like to meet with them about every other week for the next few months and kind of go through a vetting process and answering, asking a bunch of questions. What are the kinds of spaces that you guys would like? What kinds of things would be really helpful to the community? And then start, you know, picturing, what, what does that mean? What does that look like? And where does it need to be located? What kinds of places, is it one location? Is it two locations? Are they smaller remote locations or is it one single spot for some additional space? Those kind of questions, I, I think it gives us a chance to just kind of with an outsider's viewpoint, just to kind of generate some good questions and help everybody understand what they might need. And then at the end of that, we, we would put together, you know, whether it's one site, two sites or whatever the, the plan looks like, like we did for the park system. We would just take those different sites, those different locations and then, you know, put them on a map and make sure everybody understands what, what the impacts are. What kind of size of facility is it? And then what does that translate to dollars? McCown Gordon is right now partnered with us at Friends University. We just finished a large master plan for Friends and McCown is starting phase one of that master plan with us right now. And their, their involvement would be really helping us vet costs because, you know, we might look at one site, we might look at two sites, who knows? Might look at several sites for different uses. There may be really different costs associated with those sites. And we feel like having somebody like McCown Gordon alongside us that can help really vet the numbers, really get good dirt work numbers, one of the utility costs, some of the, some of those other things that might make one site look really, really appealing because it's really gonna be a cost effective solution versus another location. We'd like to at least know those things going in and having somebody alongside us like McCown Gordon will be helpful in that process. They, they understand that at some point, you know, there'd be some bidding and other things that would happen a little bit later in the process to kind of validate their numbers. And we can go through that kind of a bidding process once we determine the scope of the project and things later. But I think having them alongside would be really helpful to help determine costs upfront. At least give us some good, you know, I'm just being really honest. Architects do the best they can. Having somebody like a contractor onboard with us, they, they can go out and get real numbers from, what we call them, trade partners, whether it's, again, the dirt work contractors, utility contractors, the concrete people, people for steel, those kinds of things. So, they get really good accurate numbers for us to help us get a real, a really serious and good budget. But the process of, you know, meeting bi-monthly, a couple times a month with the stakeholders that you guys define are the important people to speak into that process with us. And then we just meet with them and start kind of vetting out ideas and, and concepts and thoughts and look at different sites and different possibilities for the, for the whole city. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell and it just kind of gets a document. At the end of that, it's also kind of this program of spaces. So, we kind of make a, a real strong, you know, and well-determined list of things, the needs that are really been identified. How much square footage does that translate to? So, at the end of the day, you've got a good, a good idea of the number of spaces, the kind of spaces, the kind of functions that would occur that are being desired. And then at that'll translate to a square footage amount of space, whether it's in a building or some outdoor space as well. And then we can determine kind of costs based on those square footage numbers. That, that's kind of it in a nutshell and it would just kind of help, you know, define this next, this next step for you guys. It's a relatively, just a big picture, thirty thousand foot viewpoint of, of the whole project. We're not trying to figure out how many bathrooms or how many toilets or any of that kind of thing. It's more big picture, but it would get you to a point where you can say, we would love to have a facility or space like that. And it wouldn't necessarily give you all the details, but it'd give you a kind of a, a big picture view. Like we did for the park, you know, that, that, that would be a site plan, some, a, a basic floor plan, maybe some 3D images that kind of gives you a snapshot, not final detail in any way, but just kind of gives you, oh, okay, that's what they're talking about, that sort of a viewpoint.
So, are you guys looking at city ground or ground that the city doesn't yet? Or I guess what, because we can keep coming up with ideas or whatever. I mean, I think we all can come up with ideas on this bench, but I mean, where, where generally are you guys? Or you're just gonna think about it and come up with, I, I guess I...
That's part of our question is we wanna, through those meetings, we wanna discover what places you guys might be thinking about. If you go back to the master plan for the parks and, uh, master plan for the park services and, and all the pathways that we did for that, it was a roadmap, a roadmap to, you know, what might be the next ten, fifteen years. And I know a lot of discussion that came through that is, okay, we've got a South Park, which is right here, and we have a lot of core on this side of Kellogg and we're really struggling with, you know, Kellogg is running right through the middle of Goddard, but we wanna also entertain something on the north side to try and bridge the two together. That was a discussion then, which was three years ago. It might be that, you know, you discovered that, well, we wanna really focus on the south side and really develop that and keep everything in the core. But as you think about the next ten to fifteen years, you also might be thinking, okay, well, we wanna have some, some entity on the other side of Kellogg. So, those are some questions that we'll ask. And then, and based on what's available, land that's available or, or places that might already exist that could be for sale or maybe it's something that, it might be relationships within the community that could, could help inspire some location that we haven't thought about. I think those are the conversations that we're talking about. Yeah, and we don't know, do you own them or not yet? We, we, I, I, we don't know yet. I think there may be some, I know back at that point, there were three or four sites that were on the north side of town, especially that we, we think we can get that ground. We don't know exactly what it might cost or no, we have that ground or those sort of questions. At this point, I'd have to get more up to speed on, you know, that. I don't know which sites you do.
We own a park around up north.
I'm sorry?
We own a park around up north now.
You do, yeah. And so, so there may be great opportunities with what you've already got in your stock of, of dirt. That may be the perfect solution. We just have to vet that out with you guys and make sure, you know, it's, it's one of those times, this next couple, few months here, two, three months, we, we wanna make sure that you go, gosh, man, I wish we'd thought of that one. You know, we wanna do the best we can to kind of turn over some additional rocks. Make sure, you know, if, if, if having that extra piece of dirt would really round out one piece of property really well and make it super flexible for the next twenty-five years, maybe you need to think about that. We would try to just help you explore those issues and then, you know, at, at the end of the day, maybe a perfect fitness stuff, you've already owned, you've got it and it's a real clean and simple deal. But we'd wanna make sure we ask a few more questions just to make sure that you haven't missed a couple, you know, opportunities that might be there if you didn't ask the question.
How do you guys reach out to the community and try to feel for what they want?
Well, I mean, we'd start with Brian. So, Brian, you know, I don't know if you wanna kind of help, we, we basically had a set of stakeholders that were kind of developed for us and, yeah.
And I've been intentionally vague with Stan and David in that there are a lot of competing constituencies that either have different ideas or that there's a, a large number of folks that have a stake. I mean, after all, what started this off was a community building. And so, by, by nature of itself, there's, there's, you know, various stakeholders, all of which use that space. And then we have other, as a growing community, other public space needs that are present now and that are on the horizon that we haven't yet thought of. And so, with that, in much the same way that we did the, the Master Park Plan and the Community Vision Plan, they would meet with the chamber, you know, the library board, that, all of the users that are currently using pre-COVID, the community building, and then the individuals around town through public houses, uh, through public open houses here at City Hall or perhaps at the community center itself as we evolve and kind of begin to come out of the COVID lockdown. We will then have that opportunity to, to have focus groups and then open houses that would augment that, which is what we've done previously with the Master Park Plan and the Community Vision Plan.
That's right. And we, we, you know, through, through the people that were already involved, they, you know, they reached out to other folks that they knew that were, you know, would be very interested in that kind of thing. And we just had roundtable discussions in the room here in this building. And then we, you know, literally sketched on, on paper and walls and posted stuff up and got people to kind of get some buy-in and have to speak into those different options and which ones seemed to have the most appeal. And then, you know, eventually at that point, it was the board, the Parks Board that really kind of said, yeah, after all that input, we, we think this is the right direction on, for, for Goddard today, so.
How do you guys filter? So, if you start bringing in all these different community members and leaders and interest groups, how do you start filtering, okay, we're gonna pick this part of what they want, but not this? And, I mean, and then bring it all together because we've been through this before and we've upset several different interest groups by picking and choosing. And how do you guys determine what's more important, I guess?
Well, Mike asked a couple of questions. So, what, what were the pitfalls of that in, in before? And what, what was it specifically about, maybe?
Well, I think one of the things, and April can speak up back there if she'd like, but I mean, just for the, the sake of transparency, is, you know, is it, is this going to be a community center and library? Is this just gonna be a community center? Or are we gonna have a kitchen to where the, you know, the puppet ladies can come in and do their thing and make cookies? I mean, what are we gonna pick? Because we as the council, as or as the governing body, we've gotta determine ultimately a cost and that's the, the big key. And I guess where, I think McCown Gordon back there might have an answer.
I could certainly feel that.
And does Mitch Vans with McCown Gordon?
I, I do think that at some point, budget always helps make some decisions.
Absolutely, it always drives. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mitch Vans with McCown Gordon Construction. So, so he's absolutely right. Stan and David would bring a number of different community groups together and then organize those ideas in a number of different fashions. And at that point, they would come up with a, a, more than one option. I'll just say that. It could be one, it could be whatever they can dream up. And then they would take that X number of options and, and lay it on our desk and we would put numbers to that. And as you know, dollars drive everything, so it's, it's, you can only make decisions whenever you understand, is this a one million dollar decision or a, a ten dollar decision? And so, with the, with the plans and with the understanding of what those plans cost, you'd then be able to, to make a conscious decision for the best, for the best of the Goddard citizens of Goddard. And those costs would, would encompass a lot of different things. Whenever you're going through evaluations of different sites, sometimes you'll find that the existing site, the, the ground of dirt that you already own, it may actually cost more to build on there because there's two miles of water line that you have to bring to it. Whereas you could buy a site that's closer to those utilities or has less dirt work involved and it would actually cost less than the, which is so counterintuitive of what you would think. But whenever Stan and the community is able to, and, excuse me, David, would dream up different solutions, we would then put costs to them. It would be presented by Sheldon Architecture and then this group would not make any decisions. It would be up to, to the council.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. You know, I think one thing we've tried to do and I, I'm, I'm not perfect at this, but I really do wanna find out what you guys are worried about in this whole thing. You know, and it sounds kind of silly maybe, I don't know. Knowing what those things are, the hot buttons, the, the spots that you know that maybe have people tripped up on before, let's get those people's front and center in the next discussion. I mean, we, and, and at Friends University, we're, we're doing this, with Sterling College, we're doing this, at Heston College, we're doing this right now. Not everybody can get what they want. That's my first sentence. There's gonna be people in the room that are disappointed by what we have to decide because we can't afford to do everything. That's one of the first things that comes out of the chute. And I don't mean it to sound like a downer, but you know, it's just reality. Not everybody's gonna get what they want. And so, we gotta decide and we, we, but the budget really helps us prioritize. We really decide at the end of the day, you know, we really only have so much square footage that we can spend and, and raise and, you know, tax and all that jazz that it takes to do this, right? And at the end of the day, you guys know, you've got a threshold you think you could do. Let's just throw out a number of two million dollars. You think you could raise two million or do whatever financially to make that work? If it were two point five or three point two or whatever the number is... If it were 2.5 or 3.2, or whatever the number is, that would be too much. It just wouldn't get support. It would be frustrating to the people of Goddard. I don't know, right? I don't know what those things are. You guys do. If we, if you guys ponder those things and you think, we think we could sell to the public a project in this price range if it had the right kind of components. What the right kind of components would be will be determined in this process, right? We'll, we'll say to do, we'd love to say, we need X amount for our community center. We need X amount of space for some kitchen area that would support that community center, X amount of space for a library that would be satisfactory, X amount of space for, and then fill in the blank. That will translate to a dollar amount. And we can determine at that point, you know, those are all, that's the wish list of all the things we'd love to see in this facility. It'd be awesome. And, and then we determine, we think in that, that wish list of items is going to translate to about, about this dollar range. That's the process. And, and we would, you know, again, like Mitch said, we, we could vet five or 10 different options. Usually they'll come down to a square footage issue, though. I mean, we, we can look at, I don't like the way that looks, or I want more blue, or I want a different roof line, or whatever. That's not the thing we need to worry about. We'd need to worry about, what's the overall scope? You know, do you, do you, how much space do you want to build? Do you want to build a seat 200 people in this community space? Do you want to be able to have, you know, 50 people enjoying stuff in the library and having a Saturday Kids' Day for reading? You know, all those different things that we want to determine. If you want all those things, we translate, translate it to a square footage, and Mitch will help us on, on the cost. He's 100% right, though. It's really bizarre how much variance. The building itself generally is something that is relatively easy to quantify. It's this number of doors, this number of, you know, light fixtures, this number of toilets, this number of sinks, walls, so forth. It's a pretty straightforward process. It really isn't that tricky. Like when we go out to bid, that's usually within a 2% to 3% range is the variance between the top and the, and the bottom of the, of the bidders. Because the building itself is relatively straightforward. Where you get tons of variance is on the site work. And, and like Mitchell was saying, I mean, if there's one piece of property you guys own that you guys really like a lot, but we've got to bring a lot of sewer or water lines to get to it, we may spend a few hundred thousand dollars just getting the utilities to the site. And we could look at another piece of property that's a lot closer to all that. It might be cheaper for you to buy it and not spend the extra money for the utilities, if that makes sense. That would be an example of things that we would vet and give you those options. But more, more than anything, it's about giving you guys good options that make sense, that fit all the words that we've heard, and then that gives you kind of a good, better, best, you know, maybe? Here's, here's the basic stuff that we've heard, here's a little bit more, and then, boy, if we got everything we wanted, it would be, you know, good, better, best.
I think also, and just want to add, at that best level, when you think, I wish we could really get it all, thoughtful design, programming, and how you lay out a building in space, you can offer up things like Phase Two, Phase Three. So those, those, if you can only get this much, but you want a 15-year plan or a 20-year plan, you can thoughtfully design it out so that when you do your next phase, it really addresses and reads back to your first phase. So it's not just something that feels like it was a task on, it's something that is designed into your master plan of that specific building.
That's great, yeah. We definitely want to think about it as, as something that's very expandable, for sure. You bet.
Okay. What do you guys want to do? Proceed? Have them start working?
Yes, sir. All we would need is a motion to.
What's the cost going to be?
We anticipate an estimated cost of $10,000, which would be in line with similar type engagements that we've done in the past.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to proceed.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Then the only question, thank you, by the way. This will be fun. I really, I, do, we didn't really talk a lot more about, you know, additional timeframes for you guys. Are you ready to kind of, you know, like, if we got started, let's say, by the end of the month, or for some April or something like that, is that, is that when we say proceed? Is that like?
I say is, whenever you guys are available, we're available.
Okay, great.
I don't think there's any time that we need to spend pondering, and we pondered this long enough.
Awesome.
Okay.
Great news. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you.
Yes. Good to see you. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Take care.
Honorable Mayor and Council, item H2, the Northwest Bypass Interlocal Agreement for Right-of-Way Acquisition. This is our second extension. KDOT's Long Range Strategic Plan includes construction of a state highway to connect Kellogg with K-96. It's known throughout the metro area, and at KDOT, it's the Northwest Bypass. State funding for the acquisition of the property began in mid-2015 and was renewed in 2015 in order to, and this was our second extension. Our first agreement was initiated in October of 2010. Both of those agreements are for five years with the caveat of understanding and acknowledging cash basis law. The city's participa, oop, the city's participation is 3,000 from 2010 and 2015 and would carry over to that same amount. With Mays having had an increase in population, and as you can see here, receiving the, the bulk of the improvements to serve their industrial park, their contribution is now 5,000 per year. The park for Goddard, it starts here from about Central down and then would connect in. And obviously, this is showing some future flyover coming in, and it's just enhanced. Again, it's a concept, it's not how it's actually, you know, designed, it's not engineering designed, this is just a, a concept map that was done actually prior to my arrival here The proposed interlocal agreement has been reviewed and agreed upon by the legal staff of all of the participating jurisdictions. Mays has a separate agreement, where ours is identical to Mays', with the exception of price. Between KDOT and Sedgwick County, Mays' contribution, as I mentioned previously, was increased from 2,500 to 5,000, and ours continues at the 3,000 amount.
So what exactly are we paying for with it?
Okay, anywhere in this footprint, we have what's called a protective overlay, which means that where the routes generally plan to go, and where the state would be acquiring that right-of-way for the construction, there is an overlay on the county's website as well, that anytime anything in this footprint files a building permit, then there's a flag that goes off. And then at that point, that's when the state goes in, actually Sedgwick County with county and state, and then our participating funds go in to secure that right-of-way, go purchase the ground at that time. And so it's just, it's a way to kind of eat the elephant a bite at a time.
Okay, all right. And what are the roads that is coming in between the Kellogg? What are those?
Oh, well, this would be 167th.
Okay.
And this would be 183rd.
So that'd be.
So our backyard.
Then this is, this is, yeah.
All three.
Yeah, and, and what's, what's anticipated is more of an at-grade, so it would be kind of like a Kellogg.
Yeah.
And there's been discussions as to whether or not it would be limited to toll usage or, or not. And at this point, I don't know how that.
Have they started building out any of that yet?
No. No, we're still in right-of-way acquisition. They anticipate Phase One being from K-96 to 21st Street. So I don't know, honestly, if even in the next 20 years, this would get constructed. Not saying that it wouldn't in five years, but I don't know of imminent plans to do so. The first phase would be up here to serve that industrial park in Mays.
So there's probably really not getting a sidewalk from Spring Hill over to the Eisenhower Schools. There's going to be a highway going. All right.
I've been asked to bring it up to you guys, and I brought it up to Brian by Commissioner Dennis. We're at $3,000 right now. Mays bumped theirs up to 5,000. And I've been asked to bring it up to you guys. Would it be okay with you guys to bring it up to 5,000 to contribute?
What's our population compared to Mays?
Mays is now slightly, slightly larger than us. And again, they're.
How are the numbers established?
Initially, it was on, based on our populations. And now, I don't know the exact metric that was utilized. Our main concern at this point is just making certain that there's a thoroughfare through Maple, so that it doesn't shut access off at Maple. Because otherwise, all of our residents here have to go up to Central and over if they want to go shopping over there. Same way with Central, because there's large residential developments through here that would need to get across. This area here, from about Central up to 13th and 21st, is very flood prone and is in what's called the Dry Creek Basin. And so it makes development of this corridor problematic because of the extent of site preparation that would need to be done for any sort of development, but even more so for commercial or industrial use to the north. Which is why that, that primary initiative for Phase One is, is just isolated to K-96 to 21st and serving the area there at St. Teresa, the hospital.
I know that our contributions have helped us out quite a bit as far as, like even the corridor here coming down 54, the state has been more than generous on helping us get that done with minimal amount of cost to us. In the same token, if they are screaming for more money, I don't know if I really want to dish out more money.
I've been asked by Commissioner Dennis probably about five times, hey, you know, can you guys contribute any more? You know, so do Mays is. It's a, well, you have to run it by the council, so I don't know what.
Why, why is Mays contributing more? Were they asked to, or they just wanted?
They're asked to, yeah. Because the, the county has increased theirs. And I think one of the big concerns is, why is the city of Wichita not contributing anything? Because they're still in the growth pattern of, of this, but the county's putting in how much money?
A million.
A million. And we're putting, Mays is putting in 5,000. I mean, so it's, it's almost like a, a token, like saying, we're on board, we agree with this, and we're 100% on the Northwest Bypass. And it does, it does affect us, it is going to help create a connectivity into Northwest Wichita area, so.
And in fact, we're working right now with, with KDOT for that 183rd geometric to help widen the roads there to make it a three-lane for access onto Kellogg and off of Kellogg, north and south down to 183rd.
Right. So at what point are we officially asked to bump up how, how much we're putting in?
Well, I think it's.
Is that official?
It's been, I can, I can have Dennis send us a formal request to bring it to three grand, five grand, but I think.
Who's basically in charge of this? Is the state in charge of this, or who's?
Technically, it's Sedgwick County.
Sedgwick County.
Because the, the signal for that acquisition goes off with the filing of a building permit that's in that protective overlay. So, you know, we're, three to 5,000 is certainly within our budget either way.
Yeah. But I'm, yeah, I'm with you. If they're not, if, if they are or aren't is really what I'm concerned about.
Well, I can, I can send, I can call Dennis tomorrow and have him send Brian an email, if that's what you guys want.
Anytime somebody asks, do you want more money? They're going to say yes.
Well, no, it's not that we're asking, he's asking us.
I mean, that's just it. He's, he's wanting more money, but is he the only one that's concerned about it, or is the rest of the county commission concerned about it, or are you all concerned about it?
Well, I mean, he's our commissioner. I think that since it's coming from him, he's our representative from the Sedgwick County Commission. If you guys don't want to do it, I mean, it's just $2,000, so we can move on. But it's, it's more of us cooperating with the county because the commission's asking. One of our representatives is asking.
I've been hearing about it for 10 years. I think we just need to get it done, whatever it takes.
What, the bypass?
Well, yeah, we, I mean, yeah. Right? Is that going to help us get it done faster?
That didn't go speed it up any.
It ain't?
Two brands not going to speed it up much, but I think it's our contribution saying, yeah. What do we want to do, guys? Do you want me to call Dennis tomorrow and wait, or do we just want to do the 3,000 and move on? I can, I'll tell him either way tomorrow.
Brian, what's your?
Let me just make them halfway.
Oh, God. Well, let's just, let's just, I mean, come on.
4,100.
Yeah, Mays has about 200 more people than us by the population estimate.
200 more people, and they're putting in 500, or 5,000. So what do we want to do? Do we want to move on? Or do we want to?
Brian, what's the sensible or smart move here?
Yeah.
I don't really understand all the background of why there's even, of why we're even contributing three of them, and it's a token of.
I, I always think, particularly when we're trying to be a good regional partner, and we apply for regional projects, this certainly shows that we have the regional interest at heart. It doesn't mean that we want to pave a $3 million sidewalk to Taliesin, but it means that we're willing to go ahead and take a, a regional community approach for projects.
So do we make a motion to do that?
I, I need something.
Okay, let me make a motion that we extend it to 5,000 a year.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no.
No.
All in favor, say no.
No.
Okay. Do I vote?
Now you vote.
Okay. I vote aye. Yes.
So the ayes have it, three to two. In a rare, over two council.
He was like, what do I say? I don't want to vote.
Let's just call for it.
Okay. All right. Next item.
Make, make decisions tonight.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I don't believe this will take quite as much discussion as the last item.
Although if we don't do it, it will cost us more.
Absolutely. Yes, it will cost significantly.
Can you keep it under $2,000?
Don't know if I keep it under $2,000, but, okay. Anyway, what I have come up before you four is to request the purchase of new wastewater samplers. Under KDHE wastewater mandates, we're required to submit two influent, which is a sewage to the plant, and effluent, which is treated water leaving the plant, samples per month. We collect the samples hourly by an electronic refrigerated device over a 24-hour period. This cycle of one influent, effluent specimen taken hourly gives KDHE and city staff a representative illustration of what is coming into the plant and leaving the plant daily. Once collected, the samples are submitted to an independent lab and tested for a host of nutrients, mainly total suspended solids, phosphorus, nitrogen, ammonia, and nitrates. Those samples and those, those sample results are vital to our license with KDHE to keep our plant running. We have to meet certain, certain high limits of all of those or below to keep our license going. The samples are taken, taken with a device. The samples are taken, taken with a device called a HAWK AS950AWRS sampler. It is a robust weather-resistant sampler with an integrated refrigerator for sample preservation and an energy-efficient ton amount of compressor that assures accurate hourly draws. When we built the wastewater treatment plant, two of these samplers were purchased. One of the samplers has since worn out, and the final remaining sampler has become having reliability problems due to its age. One of the analysis, as I just said, we purchased two samplers when the plant was construction, constructed. One of the samplers has worn out, the second is unreliable. The AS5950 samplers are vital tool in the proper, proper collection and storage of effluent and effluent samples required to meet our KDHE guideline. I'm requesting to purchase two new samplers at a cost of $59, $59.50 per unit. The cost of purchasing, purchasing those two samplers is $13,000. I'm putting a little buffer in there to cover the shipping costs of them, and will be allocated 100% to Sewer Replacement Reserve Fund Treatment Processing. The current cash balance of that fund is just a touch over $196,000. Legal, it is approved as to form. Any questions about these items? Okay. In that case, it is recommended the city council approve the purchase of two HAWK AS950AWRS samplers in the amount of $13,000.
I'll make the motion too.
Can I go for 20? Sorry. That's our merit. I had to.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good, motion passes.
Thank you, Council.
I was just sort of wondering why if the geese were dying, we'd know it was up bad, and if they weren't dying, then we'd know it was up there.
But they're just a mechanical item, and over time, they wear out. And they've met their, their maximum.
So, we've begun working on the capital improvement program for 2021 to 2026. We update this annually, the five-year schedule for, five-year budget, for lack of a better word, for our capital spending. This is the first step in our annual budget process for our adopted operating budget. Capital improvement program is driven primarily from the following provision, mission values and objectives, city's business plan, we adopted in 2017, part of our strategic process, and the community vision plan. It's a living document, meaning that unlike our annual budget, which has legal requirements for adoption, and we have expenditure limits we have to stay within, the capital budget, we amend regularly, even during the budget year. And it's important for flexibility, change, flexibility to change our priorities over time as opportunities become available. And, you know, for instance, you know, we were, we had big grand plans for a very big half-million-dollar playground in the main park a couple of years ago, and that got scrapped because we had the opportunity to buy new parkland. So, things like that. That's why we don't set this budget in stone, but it's kind of a guide for moving forward in a five-year chunk. So tonight, we want to discuss the capital improvement fund, its current operating position, and review of the obligations that we have during the five-year term of the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement fund, it's our Fund 90 in our, our accounting, chartered accounts. It's a primary source of funding the capital improvement program. We receive transfers into this fund from the general fund, and that's the, what we transfer in is essentially our city sales tax revenue. So, when the 1% tax that we levied about five years ago, that revenue gets transferred into the capital improvement fund. We also transfer $50,000 from the sewer fund. Ideally, going down the road, we would like to also transfer from the water fund as well, but until we get our, a couple of years of performance under our new rates, I don't think we should add that quite yet. There are no limits on budget authority as there are with our operating funds, because we, like I said, this fund is not budgeted legally in the sense that our, our operating funds are. So, that's why we sometimes spend, you know, we can spend money that we didn't anticipate during the budget process when we're actually in the budget year, because this fund doesn't have a specific expenditure authority cap. So, this year, I'm just gonna look here at our funding sources and our, which is our revenues, and then the projects that we have included, that we, things we know we're gonna spend this year on the underside. So, first of all, we have the $600,000, which is the transfer from the general fund, which is the city sales tax, and a $50,000 transfer from the sewer fund. Additionally, we'll be, we have the temp notes for the Rustic Creek addition improvements, so I included that, because those get, those get, those, those temp notes get deposited into this fund, and then as we have expenditures for those projects, they get paid up, paid out of this fund. So, it's for cash flow reason, you see the, you know, we see the revenue here, then the expenditure down here for that, for the Rustic Creek project. Additionally, this year, these are other encumbrances we have that are left over from last year, including the Arbor Creek Phase One project, the lift station project, the Elk Ridge project, Cloverly Farms Phase One project, remaining expenditures on the R-Cut project, of, of our portion of that, and then remaining encumbrances for the Fernards Road realignment. So, you see here, I want to point out, the beginning fund balance here includes a lot of encumbrances, so it's not actually, we don't have $1.8 million of money there that we just play around with. Most of this is encumbrances from, or essentially temp note proceeds that we will be spending on these projects over the course of the year. So, at the end of the year, when you take out all the encumbrances, the actual fund balance will have leftovers about $142,000. Beginning of '22, we carry that fund balance forward. Again, we have our transfer from the general fund, $600,000, which again is the city sales tax, transfer from the sewer fund. And then, in 2022, we have the, our commitment to the 183rd Street and Kellogg, the geographical improvements that Brian referenced earlier. And then, we will also be encumbering $325,000 a year for our repayment for the lift station, because, you know, we have the temp note for the lift station, but we do have to pay that back. So, we'll be encumbering $325,000 a year for four years to make that repayment. Additionally, we have our contribution to the Rustic Creek project, so we'll be encumbering $50,000 a year for that, for our participation in that project. At the end of the year, that drops our ending balance down to about $67,852, excuse me.
So, what's our lift station? What's the total obligation?
$1.3 million, give or take. It's how much the, of the temp note, what the temp note was, so we'll have to repay that. And we're not financing it, we're paying it with cash. So, again, for 2023 and I believe in 2024, again, we'll have the same revenue, the general fund transfer, which is the city sales tax, and we'll have the, the coverage for the lift station, the coverage for the Rustic Creek, our participation in the Rustic Creek addition. But as you see, you know, as of today, we don't have any additional projects planned that we'll be spending money on. So, we are, you see the fund balance going back up. So, the difference there is about $275,000 that we will either be rolling into fund balance or spending on projects as they become available. But that number is 275,000. It's not, you know, there's no, there's no additional funds that we plan on transferring into here that we would have to use for other projects. And the same again in 2024, we'll be bankrolling about $275,000, bringing that ending balance up to 617,000. And then '25, the final year of our, the plan as of now, would bring that fund balance up to just under 900,000. Again, bankrolling, assuming we're not spending on other projects and carrying forward that $275,000 difference in transfers every year. So, like I said earlier, the capital project expenditures that we have currently will deplete most of the fund's cash balance in '21 and '22. It includes the Arbor Creek addition, Cloverly Farms addition, and the lift station. And beginning in 2023, we'll be putting back some of that fund balance additionally, additional $275,000 a year that currently is not earmarked or encumbered for anything else will be going into the fund. So, unless you have any specific questions, this is gonna be our first step. And going forward, we'll present the formalized capital improvement fund that'll kind of expand on what we've shown you tonight.
Is any of the money that's earned off of the, like the sewer fees for the new additions, is that, can any of that go towards paying back that lift station, or can't?
It's not gonna, it's not gonna generate, you know, the kind of money that we're...
Well, I mean, if you have 50 homes a day, 40 bucks a home a month, that's like $12,000 that could go towards that.
I don't think it's gonna generate $1.3 million in 20 years, which is what we would have to, which would have, we'd have to structure a debt in order to, to do that. I mean, it'll, it'll, it'll help, but it's, again, it's not, and you know...
I just didn't know if any of that money's going back to pay for that, or...
Well, it's, it's going, it's all going into the sewer fund. So, I mean, it'll either fund sewer operations, as we're doing it now, and, you know, like I said, we do transfer out of sewer fund into capital improvement. So, the, you know, additional revenue we have in sewer is already going into this fund to pay for not only that, but, you know, the other sewer projects we do.
And from a technical standpoint, council members, gentlemen, it's, it's the property taxes from that development that ultimately would be the driver for repayment of the general obligation for that temp note.
But barring, barring issuing permanent financing for that lift station, I, you know, our only other option is to pay cash for it. And we're not gonna have, I don't think we're gonna see, because, because the way these, you know, we're essentially putting in a lift station that's not serving anything right now. I mean, we're gonna be adding homes, obviously, beginning now, going forward, but we're not gonna be generating enough off of the new homes in the short term to make, to make an annual payment on a permanent bond for that project. We're not gonna have, we're not gonna be generating the additional revenue to offset our current budget, essentially.
That you have a development going north of 23rd Street, that, that could serve that area too?
It could serve north as well as south along 183rd.
Well, at this point, it's a done deal.
Yeah.
Right. So, what we're doing today is you're just kind of updating us.
I'm just, I'm just showing you how, what, what resources we have available for capital improvements for the next five years.
Which is very slim.
It's, yeah, the, the purpose of this agenda item is to kind of set the canvas size for the discussions ahead as we roll into the capital improvement, and then ultimately our regular budget process. Okay?
You know, remember, this isn't, I mean, like I said, this is, the capital improvement fund is the primary source for how we do capital improvements. We also have our Parks and Recreation Fund, which we put $50,000 a year into that, so we have opportunities for parks projects every year, not grand-scale parks projects, obviously, but we do, are putting money aside to do something. I mean, we could, we've, Brian and I have already thrown around ideas about things we can do in the short term to, you know, continue to upgrade our park system at, you know, not putting in a million too in amenities once, you know, one year and things like that, but, you know, we have, you know, ideas about things to move forward that, you know, things we talked about in the past, so.
And that's where engaging the park for, for input are, the limited, the use of limited resources will be key. But we need to, before we do that engagement process, we need to understand what the, what the playing field is. So that way, they understand what, what they have for recommendation and why.
Because of the lift station?
Because of Arbor and Rustic, yes.
Is that it?
Unless you have any more questions, that's all I got.
Any more questions? Is it?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council. This is just showing progress on the Starbond and the construction, which has progressed even more so since the March 1st picture. With the rain, the current, we went with slightly older pictures for the current status, just because you can tell from the March 11th there, the Hotel Pad site currently underway with some construction. It's just, and it's, it's just muddy, obviously, with the extent of weather that we've had. Arbor Creek, looking south-southwest from the main entrance, this is the hedge row between the development and Amelia Earhart and the rest of the GHS complex with the model homes. Just showing some cul-de-sac street views of some of the spec homes for sale there. Reiterating, there's 245 total lots with 31 already sold out of the 59 in Phase One. Cloverleaf showing the progress from the 1st to the 11th, and this is looking back to the north. Showing that Phase One has 50 total homes with 22 on Martin's Court, which are the duplexes. Elk Ridge showing the continued lot development in the final phase there. There's 14 remaining lots in Elk Ridge. Showing Rustic Creek, which we have, and we will be bringing, I think, future contracts going forward in April for the initiation of further development there. And this is looking to the north with the Orshelands Building and the Quick Shop on the south side of the image. This is showing the Brahms progress from March 1st to March 11th. Just letting you know that we're still working on the R-Cut project, and you'll see on the 1st, they were out doing what's called pot-holing because of the sheer number of utilities that are located in this right of way. To get their exact location, you have to do a slow, methodical tringe cut to identify what's there and their depth. And that's what, that's what this is an image of. The next item, as you can tell, is our pavement preservation program, showing that about year three, we want to come in and put some sort of penetrator rejuvenator sealant on top to take that new road surface and, and seal it... top to take that new road surface and, and seal it so that it extends its, its life and its wear. And then just kind of showing the average cycle, after about 20 years, that's when we need to look at a full reconstruction. These items here, in the yellow and tan, beige, are located in the street fund, and that's what we'll show you next, and I'll have Brooke provide a little commentary as far as, as the plan ahead that he and Harland have been working on with this. Now, the red here is more of a, it's kind of in between, but as a general rule, it's a CIP because it, it requires a mill overlay and crack seal, but there often may be some base work that needs to be done. And that, that's when you start getting into costly stuff. So the red here can fall into the street fund, or it could fall into a full-on rehabilitation, which is a, a capital improvement project. So, the green is when you have to go ahead and outright rebuild the road, and we have several of those here in town that we're prioritizing for that. The North Frontage Road, a couple of roads in Old Town.
So where are we on that timeline?
Well, it depends on the road.
Oh, oh, okay.
So many, many of our, our, our new construction, whether it's in the Seasons, or St. Andrews, or Autumn Blaze, or Spring Hill, are somewhere within this 15 to 22, 23 year cycle.
So they're already at the 20 year, being done already?
Yeah, you know, looking at Spring Hill, 15 years, St. Andrews, 15 years.
Still pretty good.
It's because we've been, been doing that. So the next cycles, what, what we're showing here, and I'll go ahead and let, let Brooke explain, and I want to thank Micah and Brooke for, for the wizardry of the map.
Now, we all remember the, the slursill issue with 2019. Essentially, going through and looking at these roads, the quality of work is not the same on some of those roads as others, but we're not going to do slursill again, but I wanted to say that, that not all those roads that were done that way are degrading as others are that were done that way. Having done that, and driving all these, every single road in town several times, what we're choosing to do largely this time is to hit our cracks, whether it be crack seals, sealing in the roads, edge sealing, and then use an asphalt rejuvenator. As Brian had mentioned, asphalt rejuvenator is good for earlier in the road's life cycle. It adds, for lack of a better term, a package of additional chemicals that go into the road that keep that asphalt, kind of in layman's turn, I guess, Harland, you'd say, flexible to an extent, and extends that road life. So we're gonna do, spend our time this year with our maintenance, as I said, doing crack sealing. We're gonna hit cracks in virtually every part of town. As Brian had mentioned, we've got some roads that are hitting that 20-year mark and are needing milled and, and capital work, which we're working on and, and talking with Harland and Brian about that. And those are primarily the North Frontage Road and a handful here in Old Town. So you're gonna see crack sealing all through St. Andrew, or Seasons, St. Andrew, Spring Hill, Elk Ridge, Hopper. We're gonna hit some cracks there on Martins, and then we're going to do, not very many cracks in paint, but it is a good opportunity right now to do a, a, not a sealant on that or a preservation package on that to, to keep that asphalt nice. Any, any questions? Anything that, questions about roads in general? Now, I know that, Mayor, you had mentioned Third Street, that's one of them that has reached that life where we're really needing to do a mill, and that has to be planned as a capital expenditure, so that's something Matt and Brian would discuss in the time, for the timing on that.
Brooke, you might, you might just say, I mean, crack sealing is a job that is never finished.
Yes.
I mean, you do it every year.
You do it every year.
If you stay on top of it, you catch up. Hopefully, you, you, you be intensive about it initially, and you catch up, and then you just a continual process.
Yeah, and so the plan with that, as Harland said, you do it, it's continual process. We're gonna hit all the, we're gonna hit as many cracks as we can this year and prep up for a different type of a sealant next year over some of these years.
I was gonna bring up the, but you already brought it up, the Frontage Road on the north side of Kellogg, it's pretty bad, and you said you're gonna start working on it.
It is, we're working on it, and it's, it's a capital item because really to do that right would, most likely, it would require tearing most of that out, new curb and gutter.
That's one of those that requires a full depth rehab.
And coordinating with the businesses because their operations would be impacted. And, and with the R-Cut and some of the surface work and road work that needs to go on, getting that done then will let us assess.
Right.
So within the next couple of years, we would need to be, it won't last that long, but I'm saying that within the next two years, we would need to be doing something.
Right. Definitely, definitely, because it's, it's one of those things where it's at a, a state of repair now where we can patch it and patch and patch it, but it's about, about all options we have.
Yeah.
Once you get the bigger, the baligator cracks are through to the base, it's, it's kind of a done situation. But we'll look at more, more of a, not an overlay, but we'll look at different types of sealants for next year, but as, as I said, we're gonna just, we're focused on crack sealing, edge sealing, and those types of items.
Thank you, Brooke. Thank you, Brooke. And just, we've touched on this, working with Trans Systems and Kaido for that 183rd geometric improvement project, and we'll keep you informed on that. And then Neighbors United for 2021, set for Saturday, April 24th, from 8 to 11:30. Not a large kickoff, and I'll let Thatcher provide some comment on that as he's our staff representative on that committee.
I don't have much, we just had one meeting so far, and basically, we're gonna have, there's not gonna be any large group gathering before or after for lunch or anything, so it's gonna kind of be, think of your own project and show up and do your thing, and I know Pathway is gonna be kind of doing their own thing with projects and everything, and Brooke and I had already talked about doing another trash day, so we're gonna kind of focus on that aspect for the city, I think, so.
And with that, we have our upcoming notable items. The fleet purchase on the 5th. The Lions Club would like to request funding for the fireworks show, that'll be on the 5th. The Chamber, we anticipate the 5th, but possibly the 19th. Tentatively scheduled for some sort of distribution authorization for the Tanganyika CID, but again, that's just an, an estimate as we're waiting, the ball's in their court on that, as they have documentation and stuff to compile, but we're just kind of keeping it here for now. The roadway maintenance on the 19th, we'll have a sign ordinance discussion and some direction from the governing body on the 19th, and then again, some possible devastates replat and possible Phase 2 cloverleaf, but Phase 2 cloverleaf is tentative as well. And with that, that concludes my report, if there are no questions.
Is there a plan on having the garage sale in May, or...
The city's never really been involved in that, but we do on our social media, put something out where folks can find those maps, but last year, and honestly, this year too, we weren't anticipating on doing much because of the COVID stuff. We're still in May, we should be coming out, and most of the folks that want or need vaccinations that want to receive them should have them, but it's, you know, it's gonna be one of those where it's the, the individual caveat emptor.
We were gonna try to take it over, or at least put a map out last year, and that was right in the middle of COVID, so we decided not to do anything because of the state mandates, but I know the Lions Club, I think, took it over in some capacity, or maybe made a list and distributed it out.
Did we ever decide on how much we're gonna give the Chamber this year and what the responsibilities were gonna be for that money?
No, sir, in fact, that discussion was tentatively scheduled for this evening, but due to some unforeseen circumstances, was, was rescheduled, and we're planning on that actually occurring on either April 5th or possibly the 19th.
And we have that discussion, can we have some Chamber people here so we...
Oh, yes, sir, in fact, it would be, it would be the executive director, Ms. Angela Dunce, Angie would be the one making that presentation. As well as traditionally, they've had board members here as well to answer questions.
Sarah.
So, yeah. Sarah?
I was gonna ask about the fleet purchase since we ended up skipping it last meeting, but I got my answer, so, yeah, nothing.
Michael?
Who, me? Yeah. Oh, well, I appreciate all the good work over at the, at the plan.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Keep it rolling.
Do I have anything to say?
Yeah.
Oh, not at this time.
I spoke with you about earlier, the trees in front of the Star Bond. Rodney texted me earlier this weekend and asked me what our plans were, when we planned on taking those out. What's the status on that, Rodney?
Yes, sir, as we mentioned previously, when I believe it was brought up in September, November, and now, we're still waiting on the final site plan, which require the landscaping and design so that we can look at whatever they're doing, we'll go in then at that time and remove those trees and put in some urban streetscape trees, which tend to grow more vertically, but yet are still designed in such a way that allow for the, to, to kind of augment or accentuate the space that they're trying to draw attention to, but still providing some greenery and some shade. But again, they tend to grow more down rather than out with their root bases, so it minimizes any potential damage to, to the road bases.
When you did a landscape plan before we cut them down, or get a quote?
Yes, sir, that way we understand exactly, kind of, for our own planning, we're doing something that supports their internal landscaping as well.
Cut those things down, you just bulldoze them.
Hold, hold, Harland can attest to the fact that if there's a citrus that's still alive, there'd be hell to pay for cutting those trees down.
I was just gonna say, back when we did the Frontage Road project, I was pretty adamant about those trees gotta stay, so.
Okay, so we got an executive session. For non-liked personnel to protect the privacy of the employee. How long do you think it's gonna take?
20 minutes, sir.
20 minutes?
Get for motion.
All right. I'll motion to recess in the executive session and protect the privacy of individual employee personnel, non-liked personnel may have exception. KSAT 75 dash 4319, City Attorney and City Administrator, over. Convene, open the meeting in City Council, State Board at...
20 minutes, 20 minutes.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent, calling, ever since, aye?
Aye.
Okay.